I like allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to a free and public, which stands a nation under God, invincible with liberty and justice for all.
The first thing will be approval of claims. And it looks like we have a total of, let me make sure, seven hundred and ninety-three thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars and eighty-seven cents. Anything that Deputy Cook might want to add by chance or?
Yep.
Any questions guys about the claims? If we would get a motion to approve. I like a motion to approve your claim question then. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes three to zero. Next item is approval of the ten fifteen twenty twenty-five town council meetings plus a special executive session meeting on eleven five twenty-five. Do we have any questions or concerns over those two? Okay, we can mean a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve, approval of minutes, uh, the executive session minutes on eleven five twenty-five.
Is there a second?
Aye.
All in favor, signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes three to zero. Town manager is not available again tonight, so we'll move forward to Brian here for the utilities.
Well, we started on the water main on Rowan Street from Vice to Van Swoe this morning. We got the tap made at Vice. Um, we're starting to work it over to the street. It might not get completed here because of manpower, because of deer season, and we've got some cold weather heading our way here in a couple weeks, so.
It's been.
It might just be in the ground, we'll start picking up next spring to complete that. Uh, going down here. The fiber project, splices have all been made on what our original contract was, but uh, we did a section a few years back where the squirrels got it overhead and we put it underground. It wasn't completely all spliced back together, they only did like forty-two or twelve pair in it. Um, so I had to get a quote to finish it out, and that was part of our electrical loop. Um, that way if we do have a break in line, which we do have one someplace now, we can always tie into another line, get it to go through. Um, that quote was for eighty-six hundred and fifty dollars to finish both in boxes with splicing, and that's through the same company that did the rest of the project.
So this is something new and above.
Both done, yep.
You're looking for approval for eighty-six hundred and fifty dollars?
Yep.
How much more will need to be done after this, Brian?
Um, it all depends what we want to do. I mean, I got some projects coming up I want to tie into our car lot stations, stuff like that, and be through the waste park plant for our SCADA system.
That's a little ways away.
Yeah.
So this will be it for now?
Right.
We have fiber part, that is really big for everybody.
Yep.
Any questions about that, guys? If we want to do four, we will need a motion on that. Uh, make a motion, we approve eight thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars to end W O C for twenty-two twenty. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes three to zero.
Um, the next part is, was my list last month, but uh, I got three quotes from contractors to do a project to replace some electric wires, some poles, and just clean some stuff up around town. Um, and we're supposed to get the bids and they have to open this meeting, you know, if you want to open them now or you want to wait till new business can do it, or I've got three quotes here, but it's quotes, I guess, in envelopes.
Hey, we can look at the quotes while we're here, right? You have.
Yeah, they just have to open it in a public meeting.
I see that.
And uh, for rules.
You're talking.
It'll be Forest.
Forest Street?
And then the alley from on the west side of, on the west side of Main, starting at Fourth, to just pass, well, down by Andy's house. Replacing some of the, all those transformers getting changed out, will eliminate some of the old uh, open three wire, will eliminate a lot of that, just clean up the poles and get the, set some old load shake down through there.
It's just a, it's just an update because some of that is old.
Well, it's like we did a few years ago up on Baum Street, we got some old copper down there that needs to change it out to aluminum. Um, it's brittle, and stuff falls on it and it's really hard to repair.
So from Forest Street, be Forest Street from Van Swoe to Water.
Yep, that's three phases.
Yeah, let's open them up.
And along with the alley off of Lewis Street, the west side of Lewis Street, that alley back there, there's like four poles and transformer we'll be doing. Uh, the first one is from Frank Art Power Line throughout Tipton, Ohio. Here's a, everything described to him, which is the list I gave them, is ninety thousand dollars.
That's Tipton?
No, this is Frank for Frank Art.
Frank.
It's F P, F P L C or S P L S L L C throughout Tipton.
Tipton, okay, ninety thousand.
The next one is from Grid Power. It is a hundred and seventy-six, five hundred and twenty-two fifty.
Right.
It's a big difference.
They're getting insane.
Yeah, it's. And then the third one is from Mid-American.
Ooh, are they putting these?
No, these are a lot smaller companies, last time we had Gaylor do it. Um, so that's why the prices are a lot better here. Um, and they're a hundred and ninety-five thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five.
Why is this company better than the silver one?
I don't know.
I'd want to look for Frank.
Well, mine was, they were recommended to me by a woman, um, Seldman.
Frank Court was?
Yeah, they're doing more.
Would you, would this, would this opening, you're not positive everything is correct on the court, being such a difference?
Right, I'll look, I'll look them over, and you just have to prove the low one, I'll look them over and go through them.
Make sure it's satisfactory, that's silly.
I mean, I had the same sheet that I.
And it's something you recommend, and it does, that certainly has to be done now, but it should.
Right, I mean, I just put a project together for this year, probably won't be complete until next spring, didn't like to do another project yesterday, just got a electrical system, let her up to snuff.
This project is next, the next spring.
Well, actually, if they want to do it this winter, they can, but.
Whenever there are things.
So this won't hit, this won't hit until next year.
Okay, do you want to add to that?
We have to approve all this stuff?
Yeah, we really can't have to do it until we've prepared it all.
Unless you just give me the okay, if it's, unless it's after last week to go with it.
We can, we can make a motion.
That's just a big issue.
That he looks, that he looks and makes sure that is the lowest sufficient load and fulfills the duties and.
Is it, is it gonna hurt to wait and then talk about it next meeting?
Nope.
Because that's a massive.
Right.
That's what I had to me, that's, I don't want to prove anything until he looks over it.
Well, I think we just, I'm fine with that, but I'm more into a lot, a lot of motion for only a few persons.
I'm, we can do it next month and I'll.
It doesn't matter, we can do it next meeting.
Either way. Okay, maybe you can look.
Um, oh, the North Main Power Underground. The guys added another span on it, why the guys weren't here born, so they increased that another eleven hundred dollars. It was eight, eight thousand, eight hundred dollars before, it has to go up to nine thousand nine hundred now.
That's like the third straight month, Brian.
Well, the first time was my fault, this time is my guys' fault.
So you need to increase this another eleven hundred dollars?
Yep.
Let me just, let me just do.
Yeah, um, Ace Utilities.
Is this the fiber?
Yeah, no, it's electric for, for me.
Oh, okay.
So we need, we actually, we got to approve the increasing of the.
Really, it matters?
But, sure.
Ace Electric, is that what it is?
Yeah, Ace Solutions.
Make a motion, we approve uh, for Ace uh, Solutions to uh, work on the rest of the underground power project, uh, for additional for one thousand five hundred dollars.
Is there a second? So, all in favor, signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes three to zero.
Okay, next one's been on my list for several months, the old pickup way up for the street department. Um, it's a two thousand and six Chevy, yeah Chevy, twenty-five hundred. We've been using it for a mowing truck this summer, um, but we're pretty much done with it now. Um, if you guys have any, want any reason to keep it for you, or want to sell it?
Since the park is in need of it, that's something we discussed, we put it up here for bid, I mean, that's your choice, is if we're not gonna use it as a spark department? Is the spark department in need of it?
Only right around now is the.
I.
Gator. I would rather use that.
I mean, I, I don't really use it, I wouldn't, I want to use it a couple times to hold paint up there, actually, but. Yeah, I mean, if you're not gonna use it, then we don't want to keep it, but the park department is like, sit there and never get ran, never drove, and then we don't get anything out of it, but if it's gonna get used, that's fine, but otherwise, you see. I would bet it out, I would take it.
You don't think we'll use it at all?
If we did, it probably wouldn't be very often.
I'm gonna say if he needs a truck, he's gonna put down, ask us when we, they give him a truck to use, if that's something.
I didn't even try to set up a group bid, so.
I'm gonna use that, use some of it.
See what we can do and then move from there.
Okay, wellhead protection, phase two, has been submitted item, um, something I had to do every five years. Uh, the badge system, reading system, I guess, on the minutes, I'll wait for that one. Then I did reach out for quotes for a new pickup for the electric department, I did get the GM quotes, I contacted the company that we got quotes from last time, and I didn't get any reply back from them. But I do have a request sent to Max Plus, I'll wait for them, over next month on that one. Um.
I mean, I mean, this is just gonna be your third truck, third year, uh, like, do you have plans, like, are other trucks gonna be coming down?
Two more then, I mean. Uh, they'll be ten years old, electric trucks, it's a fourteen, so it's eleven this year, and then we get two fifteens.
Wasn't, wasn't that twenty dollars?
We talked about doing it every ten years, striking on a ten-year rotation. Try to keep it ten years. Uh, one more thing, that is, the opening we have for alignment, I'd like to post that internally, or our house, we have to post internally if we wanted that, so I'd like to post that internally, see if my guys want that.
Okay, how about that? Any questions, guys? Well, uh, next, town marshal report, Glenn.
I turned in my monthly report to you, that was in your box, any questions, comments, or concerns on that? Um, a couple other things that I've attached for you, uh, just so, uh, we're aware with the public and everything else. Uh, our clerk and code enforcement officer, uh, will be doing a business update on different businesses, so we have current information for emergencies, whether it be fire, police, medical. Um, and also, I have attached with you, along with that position, a, um, two forms, one form is a form that is in the town hall, that could be filled out by a citizen that has an ordinance violation or a code violation that they want us to investigate, and then that will be forwarded to the police department, and then on the days that the code enforcement officer comes in, it'll be looked into. The second thing that I've given you is a format of how the enforcement will take place, whether it was problem solved, whether the, how the contact was made, certified mail, in person, it'll have photos. So, and this is mainly directed towards the city attorney, and what he will need to take this upon someone either not paying the fine or, um, contesting the violation. So, um, we've come up with a, a format for that, so kind of let me know where we're at, I mean, it's Whitney Huff is our code enforcement, so letting you know where we're at on that, that's, that's the one. Um, the next thing I had was, is the, um, farmhouse recovery opioid bunny project for, um, rehabilitation programs in the area. Um, I told you that I really wanted them to submit an itemized detailed forms of what they need for their people that are in their program. Um, this money, just for those of you that are here, this money is specifically designated to be used only for recovery programs and things of that nature. So it's restricted opioid money.
It's the restricted, it's the only one it can be used.
Correct, there's other money in that area that we use for public relations, for information, for things of that nature, but this is totally restricted. So they do have an itemized, I would turn that into you earlier this week. Um, any questions on the things that they're asking for on there? I think some of them are from local companies, some of them are from Amazon.
I, I, I mean, I, they, somebody gave this to you.
The, the, the director, the director.
Yeah, so this gentleman here, so you, you go out there, does he come to you, how does that, how do you, how do you?
I reached, I reached, I reached out to him because it's a local program, and this money has been sitting in our account for a long, long time. Long time, and it's not being utilized, other agencies in the area are utilizing this money, um, so I thought, well, this is a good program, we don't have a lot of calls for service out there, it's not a problem area, let's see what we can do to help.
It just started, right?
Not too long ago, a little.
Now, this, this itemized, I mean, how long has he taken this to last, I mean, this is something he's, can you go back this time?
Yeah, I mean, when that's gone, I mean, we, he would have to resubmit next year, so.
I just got, I didn't know what you had booked out.
Yeah, I mean, I, I've never done this before either, so I'm new, I'm new to it too, but I just, I don't want to be responsible for each individual invoice, I want to be responsible for you all presenting that to the individual, and then if there's ever an audit done for the town, we have that to fall back on, and then we have the gentleman's name who we're awarding the money to. Um, but as far as on his end, that would be his responsibility.
So this is on base, like, you're having.
Right. Between new three and old three.
This doesn't say how long, like, is this just, is this for the year, like, this is for twenty twenty-six?
This is for twenty, this would be, this, this money would be used for twenty twenty-five. So in twenty twenty-six, they could fill out another application like they're doing right now.
Okay, so we're not gonna see another one next month?
No, but I would say probably the latter part of the year is when I would tell them they would be with it, because I, we're gonna have more money coming in.
Sure, sure.
At least, along with, with Susan, you, you guys are understanding how this is, that opioid.
Yeah.
Correct, and then if you were to take care of us tonight, all that would be able to be handled correctly, right? Now, how would we, if we, if we vote yes, would we have the gentleman, Glenn, would you have this gentleman come up here to see this money?
I think that if we're doing that, at least he could do is come to the board meeting and just, I'll present it to him.
Okay.
I mean, that's just me.
I, I don't, I have never met this man yet, so.
He's not a full-time.
I don't know that we just want to write a check and just drop it off out here, I don't know if that's the correct thing to do.
No, he should have to come in, but I mean, he's gonna have to, when he catches it, he's gonna have a name on it, the person who has it catched it.
Yeah.
And then the audit on that is on them.
So Lisa, would you want him to come to a meeting, or would he be able, we've approved this, and he would come up to, to the town hall next week, next month, and go get that checked?
I think, I think he should come to the next board meeting and receive it.
It'd be kind of a nice presentation for you guys to.
That's the first time we've ever did it, so.
Okay, so we could approve this if we, if we choose, but then you would reach out to him, Glenn, to have him come next month?
Yep.
Uh-huh.
Okay. What are your guys' thoughts on this?
He's just sitting there anyway.
So then have him come next month when we were presenting the check? She could have it on the claims, and we would have the check available that way, right? So that'd be fun. We would want a motion, and this, again, this is gonna be from the opioid restricted, we want to stress that, that's where that money would come from. The opioid, it's uh, twenty-two fifty-seven is what it is.
I make a motion, we approve the.
Restricted, not under restricted.
Restrictive. Yeah, I'll make a motion, we approve the, uh, purchase for items for the farmhouse recovery, for four thousand nine hundred forty-three dollars and forty-three cents to be used out of the opioid, opioid restricted.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes three to zero.
Thank you.
You will reach out to him to have him.
I'll talk, I'll talk him tonight, it's not too late.
Yeah.
Um, the last thing I have, actually, two, two things I have, the last thing I have is, there is a contract that was approved by the town board for Axon Company. Axon is a company that does several things, they control our electronic control devices, they control body cams, and they control cloud storage. Um, we are no longer using their body cams, they did not hold up for the period of the contract, the initial installments were paid by the town of Villila, approved in a town board meeting. Um, in talking to them about the evidence cloud storage, they notified me that invoices, correct me if I'm wrong, invoices from twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five have not been paid. So, um.
We did.
Two thousand, like, twenty twenty-three?
Correct. They were paid in twenty-two, and, and they were paid in twenty-one, they have not been paid.
Have they proved that they have not?
Yes, they have.
We have not paid them.
Correct.
They're waiting till now to let us know after twenty-three, twenty-four?
Very small amount, it's uh, what is it?
Like, three thousand something, thirty?
Yeah, something per year, but the problem is, is when we, um, it was, it was done in a five-year increment, so it was approved at the town board, and, and basically that, the clerk would cut that check every year, it was a, so they don't send you, so.
Annual check.
Correct.
After we approved it first time, it just would get paid every year.
Right, and it did get paid for the first year.
And the next three you have.
Correct.
Did they send invoices?
Yes.
Yes.
And we have those invoices?
Yes.
I don't know.
No, we just got them from them, basically, we have.
We got them every year.
We assumed that they were coming to the town hall, now, I, in the absence of the clerk, I can't ask her, don't know, but we ended up obtaining the correct invoices that.
Did you get them, or did they come to the town hall?
They were supposed to come to the town hall, but I did not get any invoices, I checked with Rick Anderson, he did not get any invoices.
So then how did we get these invoices now?
We got these invoices now because they said we were late, and I, I said, well, okay, that's huge, I said, oh, what, is there a late fee, and they waived all of our late charges, which is good.
So then they sent you the invoices to you?
Correct, we sent them to both of us.
Yes, I have them now too, and then I actually spoke with the woman.
Did they go in the clerk's email box, or did they come to you directly?
Well, she emailed me.
The Axon?
Yes.
Beforehand, she wasn't giving me.
Yeah, before, we don't know where they went.
Maybe we were never received, we don't know that.
Well, I explained that to the lady who I talked to from Billy, and I said, we never have any outstanding bills like that, and I said, we will take care of them, but I, I asked her to waive the late charges, it's, I believe, twenty percent, if that was.
Yeah, so now we didn't receive them.
It's normally twenty percent on each invoice, so that would, the, the late fees would be almost three thousand dollars. So, that's been totally waived, we've worked, me and Lisa have worked on that with the company, but those do need to be paid, um, and it is, and it, it's, it's already been approved, we're, I'm not asking for approval.
Sure.
Bringing it to your attention, so.
Something had to happen, because they would have been paid, they somehow not, we, we had received them, sorry, I'm being high in my speculation.
Are we able to look in the clerk's email to see if we can find the invoices?
Well, we can, we can look and see how the invoice was paid, it's already been paid once.
I guess that's something, that's a task when you get a chance.
So anyway, bringing that to your attention today, so.
It sounds like it's gonna, I'm glad they're being, being good to us and allowing us to just pay and not have a late fee.
Because the assistant.
Somehow figure out what happened, that would be.
The assistant clerk that's helping, or whatever you guys had asked, said you need to, you don't need the approval, because it's a contract, it's already been approved, but she said you need to bring the town council and make them aware, that when they see an invoice paid for three years back, you won't go, huh?
Let me ask you, when we see that very much, is when we see it on here, what? Okay, maybe you can do some, do some looking into it, see what happened.
We did, we, we researched it as far as we can, I have, as far as I.
Maybe we'll never know why we didn't receive it. It's, I don't know, it's hard to say, it's just. Okay, well, thanks for letting us know, and.
The only other thing I have that wasn't on my, my, uh, pre-meeting report was, is the signal, uh, that going down on the, uh, crosswalk signs, red blues, to slow some traffic down, um, that is gonna have to be converted from, correct me if I'm right, it's gonna go from a hundred and ten to twelve volts, because we're using red-blue emergency lights, and Brian and me have talked, talked about it, the signs need to be taken down, they need to go to the police garage, company comes up, puts a converter in, and then the lights will be remounted.
Yeah, December, in December, is that?
We'll probably do it close to holiday, yeah.
Holiday, Thanksgiving or holiday, Christmas?
Thanksgiving.
Thanksgiving.
The next week?
Yep, but they were up here and already looked at it and have, the lights are in stock, everything along that line, so we're just waiting to get those installed. And, uh, other, other than that, the concerns about traffic enforcement on Autumn Hills with the stop signs, there's a survey that I've asked the officers to do for me, I'm told, they said, how long will it? I said, just do me a couple of shifts so I can give the town board, definitely slowing traffic down, definitely not a ton of violators, um, but, so that way if you all do receive any feedback, you have something.
Is this what you, you agree to say?
Yep, that's from three different officers, thank you. I have nothing to say.
Thank you.
Any questions?
No.
Thank you. Okay, uh, next will be fire chief report, Casey, please.
Okay, uh, we've got, uh, paper there in front of you, we've had forty-three runs the last, uh, thirty days or so, brings us, brings us up to a total of four hundred and thirty-four runs for the year. Uh, which like I stated at the last meeting, is greatly more than what we did last year, with three hundred and eighty-six, so, and we're still going. So that's the, and then you also have a list of, of those runs and where they were at and things.
Any notes?
Uh, we have just one, and, and it was at three o'clock in the morning, I was working at the Kendall at the time, so. Uh, the next thing you'll see is a, a bound tree, a paper there from Bound Tree, so this is where we get our medical supplies and things. So for the last year, the, the fire chiefs here in Noble County have been working on what we call the rescue task force. This rescue task force is an active shooter task force, where, um, uh, God forbid, but we ever get an active shooter here at the school. Law enforcement will do their thing where they go in and they, they go after the suspect, well, once that suspect is out of an area, or they can confirm that that area is what we would call a warm zone, I mean, there's still danger, but it's not as direct the threat, law enforcement may have that person contained. We as firemen would go in with a law enforcement escort with specialized gear to triage and immediately treat life-threatening wounds. Uh, it used to be in the past that no, no, no medical personnel would go in until after law enforcement had everything cleared up. Well, unfortunately, people weren't making it, you know, not saying anything that law enforcement wasn't doing it fast enough, but what I'm saying is, we now were able to get in there quicker with this rescue task force. Myself and two other guys went through the training a couple months ago, and we're gonna bring that back and do that training with our department. So the medical supplies that I'm, uh, wanting to purchase or purchasing here, um, is basically for our, what we call go bags. So it has all, you know, turtlets and just different, uh, compression gauze and things along those lines that would help us in to treat life-threatening injuries quickly.
This is just the fifteen?
Yep, and so the total for all of that, to get four bags in service, comes out to one thousand five hundred and fifty-three dollars and thirty-six cents.
Does, does all this stuff expire?
Um, some of it does, some of it does, the, like, the, what we call chest seals, they do after a while, um, what we would end up doing with those is using them for training. Um, I say. Yeah, I can't tell you, I don't know the exact, like, how long their, the shelf life is on them, but.
So you want to get four, and then, like, every, you don't know what you're gonna have to purchase, but at some point you.
Yes. No, this is a, I mean, we've bought some of this stuff before in smaller quantities for like our normal med bags, but this large of a quantity is, is not, because this is a branding program we're starting.
Gotcha, okay. Gotcha, okay.
So you have to, as you do to.
What's the reasoning for four?
So you would have, it's just the amount of teams. Uh, we have four bulletproof vests, uh, actually, we have five, I keep one in my command truck, um, and then I have four on the engine for, for people. Basically, I would keep a bag, and then there'd be three bags on the engine, and just the amount of supplies that we would have to be able to go in.
I, I, I would.
Yeah, I, I have, uh, money in the equipment line, so.
I make a motion that we could just go bags?
I call them the, the, the go bags, yeah.
Go bags from Boundary for one thousand, four of them, for one thousand five hundred fifty-three dollars and thirty-six cents out of, uh, the fire department.
Is there a second? All in favor, signal by my eye?
Aye.
Aye. I motion passes three to zero.
You? I'm trying to act like you. Uh, the next thing, uh, there is a quote here from Hoosier Fire, uh, this is where we purchase our turnout, our structural turnout gear from, for the fire department. Uh, I would like to purchase two new sets, um, this, the gear expires every ten years, and so I'm just trying to, every year, with the money that I have towards the end of the year, leftover, like our miscellaneous line item is what I want to purchase this out of. Um, go ahead and purchase two new sets, and there's also a helmet on there, um, for my assistant chief. So, uh, it's just a matter of trying to get a good rotation with our gear.
True.
Uh, as you can see, it, it is expensive for one set of gear, and I don't want to have to buy fifteen sets in one year, so trying to get a little bit each year.
Is that a year fund too?
Yes, this will go away.
Plus, plus an extra helmet.
Yep, which brings the total up to nine thousand six hundred and nineteen dollars and sixty-five cents.
Any questions about that?
What, so, how many are expiring? Is it two that are expiring, and you're buying two new ones, or you're just?
I actually, I went through the gear, uh, two weeks ago, and I actually have probably five or six sets that are expiring, but I don't have, that's just extra gear. Like, I don't have the, that amount of people right now, so the two sets that I have are for people that are on now that I have expired gear.
So if you were to gain more fire, maybe we would have to purchase more of these?
Most likely. And that money will, I don't know if this matters this meeting, or if it would be next meeting, but that money will have to be encumbered, because it's, it's about two, three months out, is how long it takes for the gear to be made.
Lisa, that's, just out of curiosity, does, do you talk to the township about this stuff too?
Yes, so, and, uh, the township is gonna buy us some stuff, I'll, I'll talk about that af- right after we get done with this.
I was curious.
Yeah, that, once you go.
I'll make a motion we approve, uh, private, private, two new sets of turnout gear, use it for various equipment line, line items, Hoosier Fire, the amount of nine thousand six hundred and nineteen dollars and sixty-five cents.
There's a second?
Second.
All in favor, signal by my eye?
Aye.
Aye. I motion passes three to zero.
So to answer that, we, uh, have been demoing battery-powered extrication tools. Um, it's the, currently, our extrication tool is brought off of hydraulic, uh, pumps that are attached to the engine, and then its hoses, so there's a limitation to them. Um, and so we are looking at battery-powered tools, and the township has agreed to buy twenty-four thousand dollars worth of tools for us.
That's awesome.
So, that's, yeah, so we're, we're working through that, that process right now with them, and then the volunteers themselves, through the community foundation, are buying the other, there's another, there's a cutter, a spreader, and then there's a ram. So the township's buying the cutters and spreaders, and then the volunteers themselves are gonna purchase the ram.
So then what do you do with the ones that are hydraulic?
Uh, we, yeah, and, so we'll switch them over from our main engine to our backup engine, so our backup engine will have extrication tools too, just in case, and then the leftover tools that we have is kind of a conversation that, you know, I, I'd like to have in the future, there's, what we, I, I don't know if you've ever heard of Third World Medic? Um, it's a company out of Fort Wayne, a, a retired fireman out of Fort Wayne runs it, and they take tools from departments that aren't using them anymore, and they're actually donating to third world country fire departments. So, that's a possibility, and something I've been looking at.
What's the lifespan of the battery?
Uh, they're about fifteen point years, as long as you keep up with the maintenance every year.
That's the difference from the hydraulic and the oil related.
You know, honestly, I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure on, on the lifespan of those ones, I just remember the battery ones, because we've just, we've just been talking about it, so. Uh, and then last thing I have, and if I'm not approaching this correctly, please tell me, I'm learning here, um, I have a kind of rewrite to the, um, salary ordinance for my department.
And you, you turned this in?
Yeah, I, I sent this to you guys, so, um, and part of this is the conversation that I've had individually with you about bringing my, one of my part-time guys on full-time. Uh, so the budget that I submitted had the ex, the added money for his salary and for his insurance, um, had all of that in there, so. If, like I said, if I'm not doing this right, please tell me, so, uh, the, what Susan had told me is I needed to then rewrite the salary ordinance for you guys to approve. If you approved it, then I can ask for that position to be created.
So did you give, yeah, and you did give it, and I, I did receive this, in case we're not questioning that. So when you spoke to the private firm that is helping the year, because we're shorthanded, because of the private treasurer, did you give this information to them also, so they were able to put this part of the, when you did this, when you gave our budget, do you know? Does that give?
What I submitted to you was put it in the budget.
That was part of when Susan and yourself were on that, Peter, correct?
Okay.
So you had that part of our budget then?
You're just, and this is what you give us, and you just want us to know that, and, and we have looked at that, and we will speak about reasons and things like that here after this, Casey, I know you had, had asked a certain couple of things, and, and you did provide those feelings up here, and, and try and submit about what parts you wanted for your department, so now it's. It's really up to us to decide if we want to accept the number you have, hire a full-time, and so forth.
Okay.
Does that answer that?
Yeah, yeah, I just wanna make sure.
Yeah, that's fine, no, there's no problem with thinking about it.
Appreciate you doing all that.
So is that, is that something that we'll be loaded on later with the salaries then?
Well, we'll have, yeah, we're definitely gonna have to discuss that too, because I know it's a little bit changed, even though it's a volunteer part of apartment here asking for a couple of those positions, having to, perhaps.
Yes.
So we'll have to discuss that too, yes.
Okay.
Any questions, Eric? All right, park department, Jerry, anything else, James?
Uh, just the new estimate for the two trees that I want to have cut down, and met with the engineer to get this new parking lot we want to put in, get that engineered, so use estimate for all apples to apples, because one guy might not. Come up with the same thing, you know, he might say, well, there's only gonna be two truckloads of dirt moved versus nine loads another guy's got.
Sure, so they're working on it now, the engineer is, and they give me a timeline, when they'll get back.
Maybe next month, maybe, you know, all day.
Yeah, a little bit today, okay, so maybe at some point, something could be, sort of concrete what we can do. Now, going back, Jerry, to the trees, you know, you've gotten some quotes, you're giving us another one, was it something we were still gonna outsource that, or was that something that?
I haven't a chance to put it in the lookout yet, so.
There's still the chance that the town might still take.
Right, that's why, the estimates.
You've gotten quotes in the case that you were not able to do it.
Right, they're on those quotes.
So then we'll just, there's just another quote for now, until we decide what, what we're doing. Okay.
Thank you.
You got anything else, guys? Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.
Uh, next, RDC, I know they've already said, and thank you, I know there's three of them here, thanks for coming, as always, uh, they have no updates, uh, so. I'm gonna go to clerk treasury board, I don't know if you ladies have anything you need to add tonight.
So, Peter and I are finally making progress with invoice cloud, that's the company that's gonna help us to be able to take credit card payments, we actually have a meeting with them tomorrow, so that's moving along, we're both happy about that. Um, also, just a reminder that we will be closed next Thursday and Friday for the upcoming Thanksgiving holiday. And then, um, I know Andy had mentioned, um, having me look into the time clock stuff more, and I found something online that's free for thirty days. I haven't had a lot of time to look at it, but I told Peter, her and I are gonna be the guinea pigs, and kind of play with it, and try to clock it and out, and see how that works, and check out some other.
Is there something they're gonna let you borrow for a little bit?
Well, it's just like you would, it's a program that you would clock in online, so you would be able to do it like on your phone, on your computer, and there's restrictions you can put onto it too, like if Brian wanted to, wanted to know where his guys were, and they clocked in, like they can't be sitting at home watching TV. You can put that restriction on there, so he knows exactly where they're at, like if he wanted to know. Yes, yes, thank you, easy, easy clock, easy time clock.
Is there something to look at, and even see if it's something we want to do, whether we start a clock-in process, whether we want to, or you gotta come in and actually clock in, or if you're on the phone, so, yeah, it's just something to think about and look at.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'd rather get the invoice kind of done, first step too.
Oh, absolutely.
You gotta push this, and I'll push that, get the invoice.
Yeah, sure, and, um, oh, good, good news for change, we did get the twenty twenty-six budget approved, I submitted, so no cuts, so that was good news.
Good, thank you.
And Peter's got some things that she wanted to talk about.
Okay.
Well, uh, with Susan, she's pretty busy with other towns, so she can't come in here all the time, and we're getting just more and more behind with our work, so we would like to get somebody in here part-time and, uh, help us out. I see we would save money with not paying Susan the fifty-five dollars an hour, and mileage and motel stays, and, uh, also possibly train that person to replace me after a year.
Okay, uh, I mean, we can talk about that a little bit, I mean, I, I'd like to definitely think about that a little bit, besides just right now myself, you make, excuse me, you make good points. Because we are spending, uh, quite a bit of taxpayers' monies to fulfill duties that aren't being done by, by, uh, individuals, so. You know, that can help, uh, I guess part-time, you know, a lot of things, I mean, if I would, you know, are you looking for someone two days a week, three days a week, are you looking at four hours a day?
Yes.
Well, because you, you know, you really, being part-time, then you, then I think instantly, that's probably like twenty-four hours, three, eight-hour days. I, you know, just when, when I think about part-time, if you give them too many hours, and they start moving in where they can be classified full-time, then it's benefits, and that's something that we, that's a whole different story to try to decide. So you have to decide, you know, how much you want to pay someone, how many hours, you know, what days do you want, uh, if it's twice a week, or you want them for two weeks, and they're not back for another week, uh. And there's probably more busier times here than there is other times, billing and so forth, so that's something we have to really know exactly what's best for us, why don't you?
Well, right, huh?
I was saying between the two of you, why don't you just kind of come up with a plan as far as if it is, you know, five days a week, or five hours a day, how, whatever it is.
Yeah, that's what I was kind of thinking about, because with the phone calls and all these other questions that I have no clue about, zoning and all that stuff, that's just taking away from my job, and I'm getting just, we're just getting further and further behind. It's like, I don't know what happened all of a sudden, but we're just busier.
Well, then do you want, do you want that person to be here at seven-thirty when it opens, till noon, uh, do you want them nine to three?
Well, that's, I mean, that's like more, probably more during the middle of the day, especially, you know, if she's sick, then I'm alone in here, if I'm sick, she's alone in here, and that's all, well, yeah, you're here too, but you can't do all the job, but, uh, it's just.
What is the part, is it, what is the part time, is it thirty or thirty-two hours?
Thirty, we thought about thirty.
We need it thirty, so we wouldn't want to be too long. So, I mean, there's some things, you, you know, we gotta, we gotta debate, you know, is it, or does someone needed five days a week, or they needed three days?
Probably at least a start, right, because she would want them to get a good feel for, for job.
For five days a week?
Yeah.
From ten to three, or, well, ten to three would be.
I mean, that's something we can still talk about and stuff, but, uh, like when billing days, and I don't know how the billing's gonna go after we finally get that cloud stuff going.
It's unfortunate.
Invoiceloud, what?
So it's unfortunate we have to spend more money for employees to, to fulfill our town hall duties, it's pretty frustrating.
I guess it is.
It's really frustrating.
Tell us a lot of it.
But I think, I think, you know, you've kind of got to kind of decide. If you really want someone, because if, if you're gonna bring some, here, here's my thoughts, because you guys, you're right now talking about possibly five days a week, which is fine, if that's what we need. But if we hire someone for five days a week, is that gonna be, you know, for how long, and then what if there's a time, you feel like that person only needs to be here three days a week, I mean, we're really, thought they're gonna be here five days a week, so there's a lot of old things that we gotta make sure.
Right.
That individual accepts five days a week for two months, and then maybe then gets dropped, or is this something we bring in until no longer needed, at some point hopefully not needed, but if needed, we would. Uh, there's a level that do with the private firm, when we get to the point where we don't have to have a private firm at fifty-five dollars an hour.
Right.
Uh, I, I, I know you ladies are very, very busy, there's no touch, you're overworked, more than any taxpayer in this town knows, and I, wherever the camera is, I guarantee it.
Nobody will see it.
So if we're gonna do it, we gotta do it right, so it does help you, but we gotta make sure we're covered on all of it, just.
Right.
Well, Peter and I's hope would be that if the person worked out, that they would eventually just take her job when she retired, whatever date that would be.
So then when I read that, and, and Peter mentions a, a year, that means I assume you're talking retirement?
Yeah.
A year, well, then, then we know that that's probably whoever we're bringing in, we want them for a year, so that person's gonna need to know that, I guess, and hopefully that's the right person that can make it for a year, and then we want, we all want that person to stay here.
We'd be able to do like a job, we, we want the job description, hours, have that presented, so that we know exactly what they're doing.
Have it started, yeah.
Then I present that out of meeting, and we can, then we can approve, we'd say, yep, you know what that person is going to be doing, you know their hours, you know their days.
Right.
And then if you have that timeframe, I would feel better approving that, so than that person, and then also could you talk, maybe even interview, I mean, I mean, that's, there's a lot of.
Like maybe nine to two, you say you want to kind of, nine to two gives them, that's five hours a day, that'd be twenty-five hours a week, that's a decent part-time, kind of what the, what the pay would be. Uh, and of course, you know, putting out an application for someone to fill our interview, whether you ladies interview, uh, somebody from the town, or whatever, whatever we decide, however we do that, maybe we can work on that, and maybe by the new year, we can give somebody.
I'm, I'm open to it, for the fact that they did, I know it's adding someone, but then it's also possibly the need getting rid of Susan, and so that's probably gonna be seen.
But we would still, and, and we would still have her for, for a year.
Absolutely.
And that, and that's still.
Susan is more to teach us more stuff that we didn't know about, and fixing some things that need to be fixed, and she's more of a, um, expert at that.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Instead of, I mean, I don't want Susan in here taking payments, that'd be crazy, you know, and, and she has help with that, or even stuff bills, but, you know, it's.
Sure, it's a role.
Yeah.
Bill, I'm sure you're, yeah, oh, yeah, I'm not, you know, and, and I don't know much time you have for you ladies to put something together, we should be willing to help you try to put something together, you know, I can write down myself, for me personally, I'll write down some things that I feel. Like what the hour should be, or the pay should be, not necessarily who you're looking for, that's what we'll see ladies for work with that person, but maybe what I feel like a pay would be, or maybe I feel the hours would be, and we could all kind of do that. And then we could, you know, you should at least interview a few, you know, I would imagine someone would be more than impressive to help, you know, and you want to go through and make sure it's a good fit, with personality, and you're able to do the job, and how you feel about that.
Yeah, so, yeah. The next meeting, maybe have something together for next meeting, is that, is that okay?
Good.
Maybe all right?
Okay with that?
Yeah, yeah.
Anything else?
Oh, no, no.
Nothing else? Nothing else?
Oh, it's great.
Ladies?
That's it.
You have any questions, guys? Well, I just, I just will thank you guys, you two ladies, thank you very much for all the extra time you guys are putting in and everything you're doing, so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, we'll move back up to the attorney, uh, attorney's report, sorry, Bob?
And Councilman Prox request, I've prepared a couple of ordinances, uh, that he's gonna be interviewing me. One will be to, uh, move billing for utilities out of the clerk's office into the utility department. And then the other would be to eliminate the position of deputy clerk and create a new position of town clerk. Uh, because you've moved billing, the billing clerk would then be moved into the town's direct supervision, so that billing can continue to be done. Right now, at least as a deputy clerk, the intention of these two things being coordinated is that there would be no interruption to her employment. That the, the transition on both the billing and the creation of a position would happen at the same time. And you can put her into that new position effective, on the effective date, right now, the proposed effective date is January first.
Well, we could do it sooner?
You can do it sooner if you need to. I picked that date somewhere arbitrarily because it's the new year, and it'd be part of the new budget cycle. If we were to do it earlier, we would need to, uh, amend some lines, but we did that last year, we moved Peter's position, so it can be done.
Would that just be like a special council meeting?
Most likely. Call a special meeting.
If we decide.
It needs to be advanced. Yes, you need to advance it, you can advance it. Um, but right now it's set for January first, so that you wouldn't have to do additional budget steps.
And this puts it more under town manager?
Yes. So you essentially be creating a new town clerk, uh, and it'd be very similar to what you did with Peter, we moved her from the clerk's office, made her a town clerk. Uh, they can continue to assist the clerk where appropriate, uh, they can take payments, the money will maybe be turned over to the clerk's office for deposits, things like that. The clerk would then be responsible for her statutory duties and only her statutory duties. She would have no other duties. Right now, you have her doing HR and payroll, so she would continue to do those. Uh, but she would not be handling utilities in any way any longer. That would not be done through the utilities department, if you adopt the two.
Makes sense anyway, I mean, that, that's why I kind of asked you about that, at what point do we just combine all the areas by putting at that point the deputy clerk, moving her to utilities, because that's basically what she does now.
Correct.
So by doing this, uh, we moved responsibility for utility billing from the clerk treasurer office to the utility department, and then we, so. We have a clerk treasurer, but we will no longer have a deputy clerk treasurer under her, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so she would be under the new, was a deputy clerk, will no longer be a deputy clerk, will now be under the town manager, which is probably where Lisa and Tyler are. So the clerk treasurer would still have that position solely on their own.
Yes.
And what is the role of that clerk treasurer figuring out?
They would be responsible for the fiscal activities of the town. Uh, paying of claims, paying of the warrants, uh, and right now you have the clerk doing HR responsibility, setting up new employees, and handling payroll. So she would continue to do HR and payroll, she would continue to do the statutory duties of the clerk. And those are jobs that could be done by one full-time person, which is our position.
Claims, paying bills, accepting bills, so.
Submission of state, or submission documents to the state.
So, so I was gonna say, so by reading through this, and so at that point, when all this is done, and at this point Lisa, then you can't become the town clerk. Her responsibilities will, will be on payroll, and will be nothing, that all falls under the clerk.
That would all fall onto the clerk at that point.
So then there'll be no payroll in January if the clerk is not fulfilling duties. There'll be no more claims being submitted, there'll be no more claims being paid. So how is this town gonna operate if we make this decision?
That would fall on the clerk to do the job that the clerk is required to do.
Okay, I understand that. But what will that make us all this time? Absolutely. But we all have responsibilities for our job, I guess, if you look at it. We need to fulfill the duties that we're paid to do, correct?
Correct, and I don't represent the clerk, so I wouldn't attempt to speak for her.
Okay, I understand, but I just want to make sure this is what would be the ramifications. And there's some background that falls on her, and that's. Yes, there'll be a, it won't be a shiny light, it'll be a very bright, sometimes dull-like shiny light.
Sure.
But we've taken a whole library this year, that's for sure. I know I'm over it. Yes, sir.
I'm gonna have a bunch of people asking after that comment, are we gonna get paid in January then?
Yeah, right now, I wouldn't worry about that, cause nothing's been, nothing's been done last year.
Okay.
I just think there's been a vote or anything.
I can at least say I asked, so.
There's not been a vote for it, and if there is, it's still looking for January first, so, yeah, I don't know.
But you can get your people prepared to know if they have to vote on that.
Understand, yeah, it's, that's. I understand. Um, okay, any questions, guys?
There are additional steps that can be taken in the event that.
Understand that. Yeah, I don't think.
Look into those further, if you directly do.
I understand. This is all, this is all in the end.
I've had a short conversation with Councilman Proctor in preparation for these items, so.
Okay, all right, so. Any, any questions, guys, I think we all understand the ramifications of these situations, at least, I do. If this was broad, I guess I would read. It's an ordinance, uh, which means, and Bill, please correct me, cause I ain't spoke about this, uh, if we're gonna do them all together, we don't have to suspend the rules, correct?
Say it again?
If we're gonna do first day and second.
Say it again?
If we're gonna do first day and second, we don't need to suspend.
Yes, it do.
It's the other way. Okay, so being an ordinance, we would have to suspend the rule, we'd have to do a first reading, and we would have to do a second reading. Uh, first, and read it, and then make a decision how we want to do it. This is ordinance number sixteen eighty-nine dash eleven dash twenty-five. It's the Town of Louisville, Indiana, is an ordinance transferring responsibility for utility billing from the clerk treasurer to the utilities department and establishing related procedures. Again, this would be a motion for suspension rules, so the utility billing would move from the clerk treasurer department to the Town of Louisville department, utility department. I'll make a motion to suspend the rules. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes three to zero. First reading, ordinance number sixteen eighty-nine dash eleven dash twenty-five. Town of Louisville, Indiana, an ordinance transferring responsibility for utility billing from the clerk treasurer to the utilities department and establishing related procedures. Make a motion on first reading, please.
Make a motion on first reading?
There's a second, sorry, all in favor, signify by aye. Aye, motion passes three to zero, second and final reading. Ordinance number sixteen eighty-nine dash eleven dash twenty-five, it's Town of Louisville, Indiana. An ordinance transferring responsibility for utility billing from the clerk treasurer to the utilities department and establishing related procedures. Make a motion on second reading, please.
I'll make a motion on second reading, approve ordinance sixteen eighty-nine dash eleven dash twenty-five, has it?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes three to zero, it's signed, it's after that. Okay, if I understand now. Is that the ordinance? Okay, and I want to just make sure I understand this too, Bob.
Okay, so the bills will still get paid just due to utilities, no?
Yes. So, uh, for the residents, there will be effectively.
Nothing.
Nothing different.
When we're talking, when we're talking billing, yeah, that's when we pay our utility bills up, up here. There'll be no hesitation with any taxpayer, there's bills being paid. Uh, they'll all be, they'll all be taken care of the same, it's just it'll go through the same ladies, it's just gonna run straight directly to the utility department, which is burdensome anyhow. So there'll be no difference in that at all. And there won't even be, there won't even be any change at all, January first, but when it comes to the billing that we just passed, that, that doesn't change anything for the taxpayers whatsoever. You'll pay your bill the same, we do pay the same, due dates, so forth. So that will not change, I guess maybe I should have said that before we got started. The next one. Okay, this is an ordinance eliminating the position of deputy clerk and establishing the position of town clerk, so. The deputy clerk currently, Lisa, Lisa Dooley, she is with the clerk's department, so she, there's a clerk treasurer and there's a deputy clerk. She reports to the clerk treasurer. If we were to pass this ordinance, she will be moved from that department to now be a Town of Louisville employee. So she will not report to the clerk treasurer, she'll be a Town of Louisville employee. That itself will not change anything when it comes to the taxpayers. Bills will be paid the same, she'll have the same role, she'll do the same job, she'll just report to the town. And that, that's the change there, so I understand.
Additionally, you are modifying your salary ordinance because you're eliminating one position and creating a new one, and that is done within this ordinance as well.
So again, it's, excuse me, this is an ordinance, so we'll have to do the suspension rules and a first and second reading, so. Suspend the rules on this, it's ordinance number sixteen ninety dash eleven dash twenty-five, Town of Louisville, Indiana. An or, an ordinance eliminating the position of deputy clerk and establishing the position of town clerk. Would you, the motion to suspend the rules?
I would make motion to suspend the rules.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes three to zero. First reading, ordinance number sixteen ninety dash eleven dash twenty-five, Town of Louisville, Indiana. An ordinance eliminating the position of deputy clerk and establishing a position of town clerk. First reading.
Make a motion for first reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by aye. Aye, motion passes three to zero. Second and final reading, ordinance number sixteen ninety dash eleven dash twenty-five, Town of Louisville, Indiana. An ordinance eliminating the position of deputy clerk and establishing a position of town clerk. Reading, please.
I'll make motion to accept the order sixteen ninety dash eleven dash twenty-five, um, second reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes three to zero. Anything, Bob, did you want to add to that, or can we just move forward after this?
I believe, I, I can answer any questions, but I believe you've had more than adequate discussion. This is in line with what you've previously done by having to initiate the process of being able to pay by credit right through the town. All, all you're really doing is continuing what you've been doing, which is bringing things under town control, under town responsibilities. So, there, there's nothing that requires the clerk to do this, and it makes as much sense to do this in the utility department as anything else. And without a utility billing function for the clerk's office, there's really no need for it to stick. All the work can be done by one person, especially with the clerk.
So there'll be, there'll be, again, for the taxpayers, there will not be a change in this town hall, the way billing is done, every day, every day work.
There's just one additional step, um, and that's just, you'll need to nominate Lisa for the new position.
I'll make that motion to nominate Lisa for as the town clerk.
There's a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes three to zero.
So there'll be no interruption in her employment?
That'll be January first. We, that's, that's what we passed. Of course, that means after tonight's, uh, we'll do a few raises, that will have to change on that. And the, the rate changes. Position will be something different with the payroll, I'm sorry, payroll in twenty-six, she will not be deputy clerk doing that. Okay, uh, new business, uh, on here is just the support for some local organizations, we've done that in the past. Uh, so I, I don't know, I mean, we know there's gonna be some changes this coming year and in the years to come with lit money and different things. So it's a little harder to be able to, uh, maybe support the way we maybe have in the past, or the way we, we want to, but I think it's a good thing that the town does. Uh, to try to help some local organizations, and I, I feel still that we should, but it's not solely up to me. Whether you guys got some ideas, or do you want me to tell you what I kind of, what my ideas would be, or what to do, and I'll leave it up to you guys, how you want this, what I want to say or do. Yeah, what are, how are you gonna say?
First thing is, call your local representatives, representatives, and tell them not to, to change this SB one. Uh, if you don't know SB one, look it up. It's gonna change how this town gets funded, it's gonna change how the fire department, how the police department, how everybody gets funded. Uh, look it up, it's not in the best favor of towns.
It's every community, not just the one.
Yes, every community, I would be calling them and saying something. Um, they can change it, uh, but, yeah, that, that has me very concerned, uh, with how we're gonna get more money to do more things. So that's why I'm, I'm a little anxious about giving the amount of money that we give. Uh, it's quite a bit, um, so. I'm okay with giving, I just don't do as much, and that's my thoughts, just because of SB one, SB ordinance.
You know what, I can do something, I mean, there's three of them, I mean, one I'm gonna have to deal with at last, and the other two I'm gonna stay the same, but there's more, there's more, I guess I'd say, cities in town which are going into that one, and discuss stuff. And I find the cutting that one back, but either one of us is. One thing Susan, our private, from the private firm, she said, and maybe not so much in the past, but maybe we should do some sort of contract with these organizations, but like the one that I, that I would recommend would be the Noble County EDC. Uh, we, we've been doing this for, excuse me, quite a few years for them. Uh, they're an important part for our county, and they take care of a lot of, all the communities in our town, and I would recommend that we would get five thousand dollars. Another one is Restore a Villa, and most of us have heard of Restore a Villa, and they, they do, and are attempting to keep doing, uh, I believe in them, it's the same, and I, I would recommend five thousand dollars. Uh, we've done the UMaine Shelter the last few years. Uh, haven't done it until the last couple of years, it's one of the newer ones we came on to, but to throw this little thing in, we are trying to get a code enforcement going up, UMaine Shelter might get used more, I don't know if that's fully sure, but it could. And so I would like to recommend three thousand dollars to help them. And then, and then the other one that we've been doing is the Chamber, we'll build a Chamber. Uh, and they do a lot, they, they're gonna welcome any new business in town, they represent us, they hold functions throughout the year, and so does Restore, and we want to get that out, we do a lot together. And I thought maybe three thousand for them. So, I'll say this out, I mean, maybe we should make a motion just to, so we can just pass all of it together, and you can write those down, please, if you could, please.
All right, sir, I'll make a motion, we approve donations this year for Noble County EDC for five thousand, Restore a Villa for five thousand, UMaine Shelter three thousand, and the Chamber of Commerce for a dollar three thousand.
Is there a second?
Second.
Oh. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, what were, what did you give to all those groups last year?
In every note we had, dude. Last year, they all were just saying the EDC was ten thousand, we dropped it down to five, but the other states, same.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes three to zero. Okay, the next is our finalized, our twenty twenty-six, um, raises. What we did last year, I don't know what you guys, how, how you two, you know, feel about it, last year I thought it went pretty smooth. Uh, we kind of started out where we just, no, no particular order, just the way we asked our deputy clerk, soon to be town clerk, to put a spreadsheet together of every employee. Uh, what they're currently making, and what kind of, you know, we asked for some certain percentages to give us ideas on what the raise would be. And last year, we just started at the top, and I kind of threw out what I thought was fair for that individual, and then you gentlemen did the same, and we just, we tried to meet. And last year, we just started at the top, and I kind of threw out what I thought was fair for that individual, and then you gentlemen did the same, and we just, we tried to meet per se in the middle or whatever we could do. So if you guys are able to, we could try that again.
Yep.
So again, this is just the order, no other way, but, uh, we'll start with the police, and, uh, for our chief, Goodwill, I'm asking for, uh, seven percent.
How is that five?
Five, seven, seven. Okay, we're going to go, so, at least like I told you earlier today, I'm giving a call, that's what we can have, but I'm sure you're right, so a little seven percent for Chief Will. Uh, Chris Arnett, I have five percent. That's what I'm asking, five percent?
I'm at five.
Yeah, that's perfect. Uh, Chris Hauser, we're still in the police, we knew there's five altogether. Chris Hauser, I have five percent.
I have five percent.
Okay, Eric Lawson, another police officer, I have five percent.
I have five.
Five.
And then our last full-time police officer, we'll go five percent, I'm sorry, and then our last is Tanner Locke, and I also put down five percent for myself on that. Okay, then we'll move to the utility department. Uh, Brian Carroll, which is our superintendent, I put in for, I'm asking for seven percent.
Seven.
Seven percent for Ryan. Jason Piper, I have five percent.
I was at, I was at four.
So is five percent good?
I think I'm good. That's what I mean.
Hey, we got it, five percent. Uh, Craig Brennan, I have five percent. Uh, Nathan Hathaway, again, I got five percent.
Aye.
Okay, Adam Bergdahl, again, five percent.
Aye.
Michael Petrie, I'm asking for eight percent.
I was at nine.
Eighty-nine percent. Okay? Town manager, Adam, I'm going to ask for five percent.
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, clerk treasurer, Rita Rocock, I'm going to ask for zero. Uh, Lisa Dumeck, I'm going to ask for ten percent. Plus, I'd like to grant her, uh, uh, one more week of vacation. She's, hasn't been here a long and had a pretty rough year this year, and. Like to try to get her another week's vacation. That's just what I think. Ten percent with one extra week of vacation.
I had, I figured they would be a little higher than ten percent. I had it at, it's twenty-six dollars an hour with one extra week's vacation.
Okay?
One percent.
It's with that extra week, it's probably one to twelve.
I was, I went nine with the extra week, so I didn't go as much because of the extra week.
Okay, so nine with an extra week, I got ten with an extra week, and you got a little over eleven. Ten percent with the extra week, you both agree with that? Okay, uh, next, Petra Tapi, I also ask for ten percent.
I want eleven.
Okay, eleven percent for Petra. Okay, now, here's a little bit, we're going to get into the fire department, and I know Casey spoke a little, so, she's kind of trying to take her time a little bit, but. Our part-time fire chief, which is Casey. Uh, it's approximately twenty-nine hours. I'm asking for seven percent, ladies and gentlemen.
I have six, but I don't have a position. I have six, I'm not those a second either. I can, um. Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Seven percent for the department. Okay, uh. I want to kind of skip down because right now, we have a part, we have two part-time firefighters. Casey has asked us to keep the one at part-time, and to take this other part-time, who is recommended to make a full-time firefighter. So I'm going to just jump to the full-time firefighter for now. Uh, I am, I am fine with making an offer of making this individual a full-time firefighter. Uh, I want, I would like to offer twenty dollars per hour, which is forty-one thousand six hundred a year, and Casey was.
I think, yeah.
We talked about that, uh, and also there would be benefits included for him and his family. That's what I recommend, but it's more important on that is if either one of you or both of you even want to make that part-time firefighter a full-time firefighter. We would have, if we did this, we would have one full-time firefighter Monday through Friday, correct?
Yes, sir.
We would have our part-time firefighter and our part-time fire chief along with our volunteers still. Throughout the rest, throughout the week and weekends. A full-time firefighter will only be Monday through Friday, correct?
Yes, uh, but I will say that the the gentleman, uh, he's come back on the weekends for things, even when he knows he's not going to get paid.
But it's not like it's going to be part of his schedule.
Yeah, no, it won't be part of his schedule, but.
I'll make sure if we make this, this is a Monday to Friday job.
Yeah.
I'm, I am open to this. Uh, at some point, we're going to have to do even more in our fire department, up to including the building. And as our town grows, there could be the possibility of more full-time. Talking to Casey, I know you guys have too many times. Starting out with one, it's a baby step, but maybe it'll get us to where we see a little more, we'll leave in the in the future to come, it could be sooner than you think, we don't know, but. I know it's a little different, I don't think anyone's ever had it, so, that I'm aware of. But, but I am fine with this, but you two, you know, you have to go with your thing also.
So Monday to Friday, he's the five, that's what he's doing there?
He's currently doing seven to three.
Okay.
We can, we can change that a little bit. Seven to three has worked really well. There's been a few runs that have came in at seven in the morning that he's been able to hit for us.
I just.
Yeah.
Oh, I'll go off your desk, Jeff. I guess what is, why full-time? What do you think it's gonna, what's the pros?
So, right now, the way the schedule works, um, there's one to two times a week because of how the rotation is, that there's only one person at the station. Um, with having him full-time and then keeping the two of us part-time, I'm going to guarantee that we're going to have two people at that station Monday through Friday. Um, and that's just, that's a safety thing, in my opinion. Driving that engine out and going something by yourself. I mean, if we have a structure fire midday, and there's only one person on the truck waiting for kind of bill and, you know, everybody else to come, like, and that second person can at least. Put water on the fire while the other one's down in the pot, like, it's it's a safety thing to have two people there. So it just get, it guarantees us more coverage, it makes the scheduling easier. Yep, so, yeah, they they do, each day, there's a different truck that they're supposed to completely go through and check and, you know, keeping the house cleaned up and chores and things along those lines, there's, yeah.
So the goal, from the first start, it was three part-time, and you want the four part-time people. And you're, you're thinking adding this full-time, are we going to need to add any more part-time then, or are we going to need to look at adding part-time, or have we got the coverage now?
As, as of the way that I see it right now, no, we we are, we would be perfectly fine with the two, two part-time and the one full-time. Because like I said, that should guarantee, other than, obviously, vacations and things are going to come up, which I have a plan for that, which will be brought up. I I'll speak with you guys individually on how I want to do that, but, um, it would pretty much, like I said, it would guarantee having that, the two people at the station.
And this person has, I mean, they're qualified, obviously, I see they're qualified.
Yep, yep, uh, he comes from Terre Bousco Fire, he's been with us for a year, he was actually the fire chief of Terre Bousco, where Smith Township Fire Department. The great asset for me, as I've been learning. You know, I I don't ever claim that I came into this knowing everything I needed to know, and, you know, I'm still learning. He's been a huge asset for me. Um, everybody that I've talked to that have been on scenes with him think that that, you know, he's a great person, understands the job, um, has really helped me. I feel a lot of the stuff that we've done and the changes that we've made. He's been a great help in that.
Awesome. Um. So, we're good with hiring a full-time firefighter at twenty dollars an hour, forty hours a week, with benefits, both of you. Yes. Okay, now we'll go back up to our pipe, our part-time firefighter. Uh, I'm asking for five percent, is that a position?
Aye.
And next in a row would be the school crossing guard, uh, asking for five percent also. Okay, so five percent. Uh, part-time police officer, uh, I am asking for five percent. For part-time police officer?
Yeah.
So zero? Okay. Uh, part, I'm sorry, police part-time office. I have five percent on that.
That's a code.
That's the code enforcement, okay. That's the same, okay, I'll just, alright. Part-time, part employee, I have five percent. For part, part, part-time part employee?
I went, I went two because Jerry, talked to Jerry about giving more to the part-time.
No, this is for, this is just.
Oh, I went nine for him then.
And I went five. I went five, and I'm not, I mean, yeah.
I went nine because Jerry said. Often that, changing that.
I have a problem with nine for a hundred.
Nine percent? Okay. Part-time part supervisor, I had five percent. We'll go five percent. Okay, we go to council, council president and the two council members, I went five percent, just for the roles.
Yeah.
Okay, the only other one, well, I do want to, two of them, is the part-time code enforcement. Now that goes with the police part-time office, which you said zero, but we had hired the code enforcement. Uh, three months ago, Glenn, probably, and we went at twenty-five dollars an hour, and that that same person is also the police part-time office. So since we just made that position at twenty-five dollars an hour, I thought we'd stay the same at this part-time years. And if it's a trial right now.
Look at it next year.
Yeah, that's, that way she'll make that money for both of them.
So we never did though decide exactly where we wanted to be on hours, and not made that decision as a council yet.
No, because.
I think to start out, we, we need to have a few extra hours because we're training, we're, we're, she's learning, uh, we're, we're making paperwork up. We're not having a bunch of meetings with Bob or anything. I have reached out to him though and sent him some things. He says he thinks we're totally online with where we need to be, am I correct?
Yes.
So, it's, I mean, you guys need to figure out.
So what did we, okay, this remind.
I was at eight.
Yeah, how many hours did we say initially we thought, Glenn?
Well, I don't think it was ever voted on, but I think he said not.
I think I was at eight.
It was either eight or nine.
Yeah, you guys talked about twelve, though, I think is what we thought.
You had mentioned, I thought, that you didn't think it would be more than like ten hours.
I think twelve would be good to start with, that gives us a little bit of leeway on training, um, and that gives us some leeway of, so if I can't be there whether to show how to do something, one of the other officers came.
So you're asking now maybe have a give or take on what's needed, like a twelve-hour, a twelve-hour work, work time for.
Yeah, but there's not, if there's, I think that, uh, it's a cap of twelve, and if we don't have, if there's nothing in the box, and we've got all the paperwork set up. In February and March, if there's no code violations to enforce, she just does her minimum paperwork, and so it could be as low as eight.
How do you, how do you?
And you're doing code as a ten ninety-nine employee independent contractor, right?
No.
Part-time?
Part-time.
Okay.
How do you, I guess I I've, um, started twelve, but then how do you go back and say, well, now we're going to pitch at eight, why would we start at eight and say, oh, I'm doing too much work, so.
Yeah, I think that's what you would want to do.
I think what Glenn was saying is early on, there'd be additional planning to the training, and then it would come down, so the training is done, based on the conversations I've had.
So are you thinking not to exceed twelve?
Let's just, yeah, let's not do, let's do twelve, if you guys are okay with that, not to exceed twelve.
Not to exceed twelve. Let's make a motion, we say, I don't think Glenn will know it's in a meeting, so we.
I'll make a motion to approve the code enforcement slash part-time office, if we have hours not to exceed twelve hours.
Is there a second? All in favor, signify by aye.
So, I, since we're talking about this, I had mentioned to her, it's up to the council, once you guys decide, but I I think that, um, now it's going to be not as many things right away, but eventually, a biannual, um. Not those records sent to you, but a biannual report of how many complaints, how many investigated, how many people took care of their ordinances, and how many people we had to refer to the C D. My, my, so you'll get one in June and one in December?
I agree with that.
Good.
Fair enough. Alright. Okay, a couple of things I didn't forget. We we talked about the fire department, and I don't have, I don't have the twenty twenty-five salary in front of me. Because I know Casey's asking, leaving this up a little bit. I do think if we want to do this, we're going to need to agree on this. Okay, because. I think there's a couple of needs, okay, so we've got, now we're, so we've got a captain.
Are we paying that?
Yeah, that's what they get, like, if you're, if you're, last year, right now currently, if you're the captain, if you're, if you were appointed a captain in your department, they were getting eight hundred dollars annually. But we did not pay a lieutenant.
No, we were paying a training officer. Um, but my, the way that we're restructuring is that the command staff is in charge of training, so my captain and my lieutenant are handling the training.
Okay, I, for, to be, now that I've looked a little bit further, but we still want to make this be put in our, in our.
Yes.
In our salary, though, we'd say, and I'll get with you, but here's, this is the way I looked at this previous one, you can get eight hundred dollars annually to the, to, to the, to the captain, that eight hundred dollars. The assistant chief will get a thousand dollars annually. This year, this coming year, twenty-six, what you're asking for is the same amount of money, but you wanted to buy it in three, so. Yeah, then we got one last one, uh, the town attorney, I recommend a five percent raise. Okay, five percent on that, so that will get older employees, Lisa, I'll make sure, I'm going to give you the, I have that copy, I know you're writing it down, but we have a legit. So that'll be that. Now, I put a couple of things, Brian, on old business, and I know it's just more of a checkup, but the one with just the badge access is just kind of, you know, go ahead.
Before we go on to old business, am I allowed, now that we've passed the salary ordinance, can I ask another thing? Well, the creation of that position, do I need to ask for, do I need to ask for you guys' approval to actually create a full-time position now? I mean, we.
Yeah, well, we just tried to approve it in our thing, but we didn't.
You did approve it because it is a firefighter, and there are special rules applied to firefighters and police officers. I'd recommend you do it by ordinance at the next meeting. So, you you've essentially said this is what you intend to do, and then we will spell out the actual language because of the additional.
This won't be a thing.
Okay.
So you're going to have to write up the ordinance?
I'll write up an ordinance for creation of a full-time fire department, because it's the first time you've had a full-time firefighter.
Which, which, it's okay. Yeah, the next one.
Okay, sorry, thank you.
Okay, so just the old business, badge access, I know we asked about, I know you're trying to do it to all the buildings in town, but we also wanted it done. Go ahead, Bill.
You did, we want to approve the salary ordinance, and I heard.
Well, we thought we would have to do that, well, we could, but I thought we would do that next month when she gets it tied up. Well, we thought we'd have to do that, well, we could, but I thought we would do that next month, when she gets it tied up.
I'm sorry, I thought that's what you're doing, so.
We're approving ra, we're getting raises approved, and then she then gives the salary ordinance, right?
That way we can have it where it's completely read out, and Kenneville's sale. So, the badge access.
Um, actually, parts aren't orders right when we come in and get looked up. Um, they did recommend that we probably put battery backups on these, so they can get it if the power's out. I have been buying some, uh, cabinets, some racks, putting each one, we have it in water, Lucky can, or Shop has a rack put in, I got one ordered for Casey at the fire station. So we just have to get some battery backups to put in those, like, two hundred bucks a piece or something like that on there, if I get my payments on. Hopefully, parts can hear soon.
So you're getting the price and then some of it stolen?
Yep.
And then, I don't know about the other thing I had just put on there, I know you were still looking at this.
Yeah, we're still looking.
It's still tabled, so basically those two are tabled. Uh, been here for a little while, but I know there's at least a couple new faces. I don't know if this is around yet, so then you'll give me a chance here, since you.
Yeah, I have a, ask a question about my, uh, utility bill for my rental property down there.
Sure.
Water line? Uh, nobody's lived in since February, I had that lot done next to, most side of the house there, and I ran the water out of that to water that. I had charged, um, a hundred and, uh, twenty-six dollars and twenty-one cents for wastewater, I don't know if you do something about that? Cause it ran, it ran, I ran it out of the house, over to water the.
He watered his grass.
Yeah, water the yard.
If you agree, we can give him a, uh, discount on the sewer, because he watered.
We have to get with him, get what we have to give, and we can't, you know what I'm saying?
No, you guys have to say it's okay.
So you'll just, you're gonna, what, what we're gonna okay is the way the sewer.
Right, just the sewer, not the water. He has the paper, the water, it's just the sewer, because it didn't go down the sewer.
I just wanna make sure we're on that same page.
Right.
We've done that many times, Jean, I just wanna make sure we're, we're.
Yeah.
Thank you. I would make a motion, we're ready, we still want to make that.
Yeah. What? Do you need to know the amount?
Yeah, you said a hundred.
I, I think historically, what you've done is that the amount's been worked out, and then you've approved it, that's what you were doing, I believe, last year.
Yes.
And so, so they.
Usually get told the price, and then I approve that.
Right.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay.
But Jean, didn't you, didn't you say?
I saw your cave fruit before I gave you the.
Peter, go, go look at the table, see what that.
I ain't looking at it like that, I have to look up online and see how much water you use.
Okay, Jean, what's, they have to hit the total to weigh that?
I talked to him.
Wave that, and you'll get a reading.
Wave it next, we'll wave it next to you.
Okay.
Thank you. I will look it up.
Okay, anyone but you, before we move on, before we adjourn? Okay, thank you everyone for coming, we need a motion to adjourn. There's a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.